Okay, this is the April 5th, 2021 meeting of the Disabilities Commission. And before we begin, I'd like people to be reminded that to hit your mute button until you need to speak to eliminate background noise or speaking. So I will read our mission statement to begin. The Disabilities Commission helps improve the quality of life for people with disabilities in Santa Monica by prioritizing issues of concern and advising the city council and city staff on those issues. The Commission recommends ways to maximize participation of people with disabilities in all facets of city life and increase awareness of the ability, rights, and issues of people with disabilities throughout the community. Now, I will call to order the meeting and we will do a roll call of persons of commissioners attending. So, Alex Elliott? Did you say here?
Yes.
Okay, alright. We have Nancy Link Ellis.
Here.
Vice Chair Lori Ringer.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine Cosmea Dodge.
Here.
Commissioner Mariel Friesel.
Here.
And Commissioner TJ Hill. Not here. And Commissioner Delbert Wetter. Absent. Alright. So, um. Okay, we're going to begin with item 1A, which is, do we have Mark Aronoff? Regarding the development of the action plan and the development of block grant home funding implementing the 2024 consolidated plan? In the draft of the year 2021 to 2022 action plan?
Yes.
You are here?
I am here, thank you.
Alright, and I should note that we have two written comments to this that were provided before noon that hopefully people have read, if not, you can read them at this point. We can discuss if needed at the end. And also, I note that we have one individual, Mr. Johnson, who has a comment at the end and would have two minutes to comment on that. So, thank you, Mr. Aronoff, for being here, and you may begin.
Thank you, Commission members, members of the public, for having me this evening. My name is Mark Amaral. I am an administrator with the city's Housing and Human Services Division, and I am in front of you tonight to present the 2021-22 Annual CDBG and Home Action Plan, which proposes use of CDBG and home funds for the city's next fiscal year. The handout that I've included in your packet contains a couple of things. Number one is a summary of the priority needs outlined in the city's adopted 2020-24 Consolidated Plan. Now, consolidated plans typically map out the city's strategy for use of CDBG and home funds over a five-year period. And for each of those five years, the city is required to prepare and submit to HUD an annual action plan corresponding with that particular year's expenditures. The coming year will be the second year of our consolidated plan, and your packet, in addition to those priority needs, includes proposed projects for funding for the coming fiscal year 2122. Those projects include several initiatives that are continuing efforts by the city. I'll go over those first. Within the city's Human Services Grants Program, a portion of program funding comes from CDBG and has done so annually for a number of years. Those projects identified in your project summary are the Santa Monica Employment Program, administered by the Crystal Center; the Santa Monica Retention Program for people experiencing homelessness and those at risk of homelessness, administered by the St. Joseph Center; and General Community Legal Services, administered by the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles; and the Independent Living Service, specifically the Home Access Program, administered by the Disability Community Resource Center. All four of those are ongoing projects that the city has funded using CDBG dollars annually for, I believe we're going on six years now. In addition, there are two new projects proposed for CDBG funding next fiscal year. The first is the Virginia Avenue Park Community Kitchen. This concept has been in play for quite some time, and it's aimed at converting the existing kitchen in the Thelma Terry Building of the Virginia Avenue Park into a community kitchen that can be used to incubate local small businesses. In addition to converting the kitchen to a commercial kitchen for said use, the city will also be partnering with a kitchen operator who will offer technical assistance and guidance to see that individuals and small businesses utilizing the kitchen can procure a business license, comply with applicable regulations, and eventually start and continue their own business. So this is aligned with the Consolidated Plan goal to advance economic development opportunities, and especially so in qualifying low-income neighborhoods, hence the decision to fund this project at Virginia Avenue Park. In addition, there are a number of safety improvements required at a few of our parks, which are located in qualifying low-to-moderate income census tracts and block groups. We are looking at Virginia Avenue Park and Gondara Park as potential sites to fund safety improvements such as new safety lighting, replacement of playground rubber for children, and renovation of the splash pad at Virginia Avenue Park, which so many of the Pico neighborhoods' youth have enjoyed over the years. Finally, a portion of CDBG funding is set aside annually for administration. This pays for staff time, consulting, and project design to the extent that is required to fulfill the projects identified here, and is limited to 20% of our annual award. That now having covered CDBG, I want to turn to home funding for a second. CDBG and home are both HUD programs, which are funded through separate mechanisms within the city. The city utilizes home funding almost entirely for tenant-based rental assistance. These are housing vouchers for low-income households, and they tend to have very low turnover. Once a household is receiving a voucher, they tend to continue until they potentially no longer need the voucher any longer. The city has been using home funds for this purpose for many, many years, and will continue to do so as so many members of our community rely on TBRA to keep them housed. Now, like CDBG, there is a set aside for administration within the home program. And finally, a thing called a Community Housing Development Organization Reserve, shorthand CHODO Reserve. This is a statutory set aside and not an activity that the city typically volunteers to set aside. However, we are required to do so until HUD issues a waiver of this requirement. Interestingly enough, they've done so the past four years and may do so again. If they do, that will increase the amount of funding that we can allocate toward tenant-based rental assistance. So we'll be looking forward for a word from them on that front, and be waiting for any additional information that may change the plan that's currently in front of you here. This plan is scheduled to go in front of our city council for review and approval on April the 27th, and the completed and council-approved plan is due to HUD no later than May 15th. And I am here in front of you today to answer any questions and to solicit any input out of the Commission, or members of the public may have with the plan as proposed. Any input that I do receive from Commission or members of the public, either verbal or written, will be included in the final draft plan and be included in the supplemental version to HUD that is due on May 15th. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Commission Chair to see if there are any questions from the Commission or any comments from the public.
Okay, so first, are there any questions or comments from any commissioners?
Okay, I'm in.
Good.
Okay, great.
Oh, there, I see you. Yeah, you're in, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, can you mute yourself?
No, I sent in my written communication. I'll let you do the talking.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
Can you please mute yourself right now? Mr. Millen?
Sorry, there we go. Is that it?
Okay. So, any commissioners have any questions or comments regarding Mr. Aronoff's presentation?
I do. Am I not noticed here?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Cosmea Dodge.
Yes, I had a question about the Virginia Avenue Business Kitchen reservation and all that. I was very curious about that, very interested, and I would like to be able to find out more about the direction they want to go, what they want to include and that. Will that be available before it goes to the city council, what, on the 27th?
That's a good question. I'd have to circle back with the folks over at Virginia Avenue Park. I can tell you that this project has been considered for a long time and has quite a history. It may even have its own website, but I have to check out and see if that's actually available now. But the idea for this project actually came up during the Pico Well-being Project and was well-supported by Las Familias Who Need Us, which sits at Virginia Avenue Park and members of whom participate in the Virginia Avenue Park Advisory Board. So it's a project that the board has supported for some time as well, and has been long in the making. So in addition to CDBG funding, I can tell you that there's an arm of the city's Economic Recovery Task Force that is soliciting private funding to make sure this project moves forward. But the city has been committed to doing this for some time and is now getting around to allocating the appropriate resources to get it off the ground. I believe even as we speak, there's an RFP out now for an operator of the kitchen. And again, the operator of the kitchen will be either a nonprofit or for-profit entity that can make sure that these, you know, potential small businesses get the support they need to become a real and sustained business, thus generating income for households who may be low to moderate income at the moment, and generating a whole new resource for people at Virginia Avenue Park as well.
Thank you. I'm very happy. I'm very, very happy to hear about this. I had no idea it was in the works for a long time. Great.
Commissioner Elliott, you have your hand raised?
Yes, now, I'm also really interested in the community kitchen, and just if you could speak a little bit to ensure that folks with disabilities have equitable access to opportunities when this kitchen is open, or can you speak about how people get picked, or just, oh, sorry, just a little bit of information about that?
Yeah, it actually is not going to involve a selection process. The kitchen will be available for rent by small businesses in the community. And if you're a low-to-moderate income business, then you'll have a much more affordable rental rate for use of that kitchen. So it'll be an hourly rate, and there'll be a preferential rate for anyone who qualifies as low to moderate income. And the resources I just described that will be made available by the kitchen operator will be available to anyone who's renting the kitchen. So there are no limitations with respect to that particular component. The idea is to offer these small businesses a low-cost tool to get their business off the ground. As you might imagine, a licensed commercial kitchen can be very difficult to come by and/or can be very, very costly to rent as a private resource. Locating a resource like this at a public park and in the midst of the Pico neighborhood, the city's largest concentration of low-to-moderate income households, poises to maximize the resource for use of said neighborhood and really maximize the number of businesses to get off the ground.
Okay, thank you. And in the chat, we have Jay Johnson wanted to provide some input. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jay Johnson, resident of Santa Monica, 601 Ninth Street. Greetings. As you know, the state has mandated certification and repairs for wood balconies and walkways above six feet from ground level, as well as earthquake retrofit structural reinforcements throughout the city. The cost for the balconies and walkways can be from $10,000 to $50,000 for repair and replacement, and retrofits can be from $30,000 to $100,000. Currently, there are 4,000 to 6,000 vacancies in Santa Monica. Many small building owners are financially burdened with the cost of the retrofit and balcony walkway mandated expenses. Please allocate a portion of the CBDG funds to apartment buildings of 10 units or less to help preserve and maintain existing affordable rent-controlled housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody else in the chat, or somebody who has a raised hand in the chat, so I'm assuming there are no more comments regarding this item, and we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Aronoff.
Thank you all for having me this evening.
Sorry, Nancy had her hand up.
Oh, I didn't.
And Lori.
I didn't see it in the... Oh, I didn't see Nancy in here. Okay, I see Lori's. Commissioner Ringer?
How is the operator going to be responsible for the maintenance of the food, the sanitation quality of the facility, and how, and preventing cross-contamination? How are all the people going, is there going to be like walk-ins where they would be, people would be given a specific area, what's to secure their food in their area, and what would prevent cross-contamination?
So it's my understanding, and I must admit, I am not an expert in every facet of the commercial kitchen project, but it's a single commercial kitchen, so you wouldn't have multiple people using the kitchen at the same time. It'd be one small business using it at the hourly rate for whatever number of hours they had rented the kitchen for. And the kitchen would be used for preparation of food only. It's not my understanding that they'd be serving food out of the kitchen, although...
Would they be storing?
Please go ahead.
I was in the food business for 20 years, so that's why I'm wondering. I mean, you have to bring in food, you have food storage, and then once the food is prepared, it maybe isn't going out right away. It's got to be stored before it gets to where it's going. So I'm wondering if you have multiple people, and maybe they're not all in at the same time.
Yeah.
But if you have one giant walk-in, usually it would be apportioned for like specific events or specific person, and if it's an hourly, I'm wondering how the operator, if they have a plan for how that would work, or if it's just an open kitchen that somebody can go in and work, and then what happens? I mean, there's no, then there's no control over the sanitation of that food as it goes out. And then does that make the city of Santa Monica potentially liable?
Those are interesting questions all, and I must admit, your expertise here certainly outpaces my own. As the CDBG coordinator, I won't be the project manager for the commercial kitchen, so I have to seek out further details to answer the questions that you're bringing up here. I cannot imagine, I will say, I cannot imagine that this is an issue that they haven't figured out how to resolve, given how profiled this project has been and the life that it's had to date. The point of the kitchen itself is to make sure that it is complying with any local and state laws, so as to situate anyone who's renting the kitchen and position them in such a manner as to put out a product that is safe to consume. And I don't think the city would be putting itself at risk of doing anything that would compromise our integrity or make the city liable in that regard. So I'd have to assume that the operators, as part of their contract, safe operation of the kitchen would must be included. And I don't envision, as I understand it, there won't be overlap with use of the space. There'd be one small business or user of it for some set amount of hours, and then after that, the kitchen would be cleaned, disinfected, and restored to original use for the next person to come in, and that as they prepared food, they'd be taking that food with them. And I understand this also being something that small businesses would be using for things like small catering jobs. This lack of place to prepare their food, or they may be preparing food at home in their own kitchen now, and instead, they could be using a commercial kitchen and working towards a business license. They'd be coming into the kitchen, using the kitchen to prepare your food, and then leaving with your food afterwards with the intent on restoring the kitchen again to clean states for the next tenant to come in.
I think it's a great idea. I just know there's a lot of pieces from, everything from pots, pans, you know, kitchen staples. I mean, it's a big deal. You know, usually a commercial kitchen, they have to keep inventory of all that stuff. So I'm assuming that the, obviously, that whoever is in charge of that contract, I just would love to know the specifics of what they're, how they're planning to do it. I'm sure it's been thought out, I just would like to know about it. That's all.
Well, you know, I do believe the RFP for that is posted now, and the RFP would certainly contain that information, and if it's something you're interested in, I could seek that out and have that sent to you. And with your expertise, perhaps you could provide some good advice if there's something missing.
And did someone say Commissioner Link Ellis had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted, it's just a question. In the beginning, when they were talking about safety improvements, I thought they mentioned more than Virginia Park, but it did not come up in the captions.
The other park I mentioned...
Is it only Virginia? I'm sorry?
The other park I mentioned was Gondara Park.
Gondara, okay.
Okay, and then I see in the chat section that Mr. Millen, you submitted comments. Yes, we received those comments, and I believe they are made part of the record. I don't know how they go about that. This is all very new to us, so, thank you. Did you have, did you need to speak for a couple of minutes, or is that sufficient? Okay, thank you. All right. All right. I think we can let Mr. Aronoff go, is that correct? Okay, thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. Number 1B is a presentation discussion, possible action on update of the pier bridge replacement project with Mr. Omid Poor, civil engineer of Public Works. And I should note that there was one general comment also on this in the emails that we received, and so, Mr. Poor, if you would like to proceed.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, members of the Commission. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. I'm going to share my screen very quickly and get started. So can everyone see my screen? Can everyone see my screen, the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, thank you all very much. My name is Omid Poor, I'm a civil engineer with the city and the project manager for the pier bridge replacement project. So I had the opportunity to present in front of all of you about 19 months ago, so today we'll provide an update to present where we are, and then, you know, we can go from there. So the agenda for tonight is project objectives, and we'll go through an update, I'll present the alternatives that we have to date with our renderings that we've prepared, we'll quick go through the environmental process, provide the updates for that, and then there'll be, you know, an open discussion for, you know, questions and answers, as much as I'd like. So, starting with the project objectives, though, we want to provide a bridge that is structurally sound and seismically resistant with a 75-year design life, which is the standard. We want to ensure adequate and safe access to the pier for all users, including pedestrians, persons with limited mobility, bicyclists, motorists, and delivery and emergency vehicles. We want to preserve the visual resources, including oceanfront walk. We want to preserve the historical character of the pier and the adjacent historic structures, including the sign, all while improving access to the pier. We also want to ensure the economic viability of the businesses on the pier. And finally, we want to construct the project prior to the Summer Olympics in 2028. So, before we get started with the update, I wanted to point out something that's on the right side here, which is, this project has federal highway bridge program grant funding. So what that means is that it requires us to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. So with that, the city is the lead agency for CEQA. However, the state, through Caltrans, is the lead agency for NEPA. So all of our documents, primarily the environmental documents, have to be reviewed and approved by Caltrans. So I want to point that out upfront, that everything goes to Caltrans for review and approval. So in terms of the NEPA technical studies, we have 10 of them, four of them have been approved. There are two that we received comments on recently, those are our cultural studies, and then we have another four that Caltrans is still in the process of reviewing. Next, we have our document, our CEQA and NEPA document, which is an EIR, and that document is being finalized right now, and we're targeting submitting it to Caltrans later this month for their review, and then targeting publicly circulating it end of the calendar year, so around December. So that's the environmental element of the project. Concurrently with that, we are advancing a pre-design, so very preliminary design work. And with that, working with Caltrans to advance some design money, so we can begin working on the bridge type selection report. And concurrently with that, the city submitted a CIP request to budget local funds to begin design. So now, I want to just very quickly go through the alternatives. I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to see the renderings that we've prepared. So this is alternative one. This is a replace-in-kind with the sidewalk on the north side, in a very similar configuration to what we have currently. Our sidewalk is a little bit wider here, but in general, this is a like-for-like replacement with what we currently have. Next, we have alternative two. This is the same thing as alternative one, except the sidewalk is on the south side, which would, you know, better provide access to the businesses on the pier. Then we have alternative three. Now, this is the first alternative that introduces the separate structure that leads to the two proposed elevators. So this has a 15-foot sidewalk, it has a 10-foot pathway that leads to those elevators. Alternative four is just the mirror of that. This is our locally preferred alternative. So this has the two elevators with the 10-foot walkway, as well as a 15-foot sidewalk and the two 10-foot travel lanes. Alternative five, this is what we call our narrow alternative, where we have no sidewalk, but we have a 15-foot wide pedestrian path leading to the elevators, and finally, to the stairs. Alternative six, this is the mirror of alternative five with access on the north side. Alternative seven, this is our first of the two wide alternatives. This is where we have two 17-foot travel lanes, we have a 12-foot sidewalk, and we have a 10-foot pathway leading to two elevators on the south side. And then finally, we have alternative eight. So this is the mirror of the previous one with the sidewalk on the north side, the elevators on the north side, just the reverse of alternative seven. So, now, this is an update on the environmental process. So in the past 19 months, so that's, we had an opportunity to present back in September of 2019, prior to us preparing these renderings, prior to submitting anything to Caltrans. So we presented to you all then. We selected alternative four as our locally preferred alternative. This was with involvement from many, many stakeholders, so it's our locally preferred alternative in terms of the city as well as all of our stakeholders collectively. In October of 2019, we submitted our notice of preparation, and then we held our scoping meeting. In December of 2019, city council authorized us to modify our contract with TY Lynn, who is our designer, and we restarted the environmental process. In June of last year, we submitted our technical studies, specifically our cultural studies, which are the most critical for this project. And then Caltrans provided us some feedback, we resubmitted, and we... And then Caltrans provided us some feedback. We resubmitted and we very recently received comments from Caltrans on our revised technical studies. So those are what we'll be talking about now. So what was determined was that elevators on the south side of the bridge potentially create adverse effects in terms of the placement to the hippodrome, which is a Section 4F protected resource. So let me explain what is an adverse effect. So this was found for alternative four, again, our locally preferred alternative. And we found that the height and proximity of the separate pedestrian path, the elevator towers and the stairway would interrupt the spatial relationship in the area and result in the introduction of visual and atmospheric elements that would diminish integrity of the hippodrome. So what that means is the elevator towers are basically too close to the hippodrome. So now why is that an issue? So because the hippodrome is a Section 4F protected resource, we are required to find prudent and feasible alternatives prior to the use of that resource. And that all planning must be taken to minimize harm to the protected resource. So this is what we're talking about specifically. So, and I'm going to provide you an update on this even further. So if you look on the left, you will see alternative three. And on the right, we'll see alternative four. So the, inside these boxes, you'll see the proximity of the elevator shaft to the hippodrome is what is causing an adverse effect. And this is another view right here. Alternative four on the right side and alternative three on the left side. So with that said, Caltrans formally gave us their comments back. And then we established a hierarchy of alternatives. So this was two weeks ago at the pier board when we met with a lot of our various stakeholders is alternative four is currently our locally preferred alternative. But if that is rendered impracticable, based on what I just presented, then we would pivot to alternative three A. I'm going to show you all what three A is. And if that doesn't work, we would go to alternative three, which again is the mirror of alternative four. And if that has some issues, we would then pivot to alternative two and finally to alternative one. So let me present this to you a little bit better. This is alternative four again. I also have on the top right, a view of the pier sign, just for a frame of reference, as we are modifying the location of the pier sign with these various alternatives. So this is alternative four, locally preferred alternative. We quickly prepared alternative three A here, because it was it was seeming more likely that by moving the elevators to the north, we would not be creating the adverse effects to the hippodrome. But we still want to balance the objectives of the project, which is to help activate the, this side, the east side of the pier, to separate conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. So we prepared this alternative, and this was found to be preferable to alternative three, which again is the mirror of alternative four. Finally, if we were having any issues with elevator towers, we would pivot to a replace in kind. However, we would go with alternative two, which again has those benefits of meeting our project objectives by activating the east side of the pier better, by removing the conflict zone. And if for some reason this alternative had an issue, we would go to alternative one, which is almost like-for-like replacement of what we currently have. It's a few feet wider, but otherwise it's the same. So I actually want to go back up a little bit. So what we, as I mentioned earlier, Caltrans has to review and approve all of our technical studies on the environmental side. They, they are the gatekeepers here due to the federal funding. So last Friday, we, our, our team was able to contact Caltrans to try to get more information from them on what the status of our technical reports are, because they've been very coy so far in providing us feedback as far as whether alternative four is preferable to three, and if even three is practicable at all. And what they informed us last Friday was that alternative three also very likely has adverse effects on the hippodrome. So any elevator towers, stairs, the separate pathway, any of them are very likely to have adverse effects and therefore are not possible for us to construct. So that's, that's the latest news that we have right now. So with that, I'm coming back to the hierarchy, which is the alternative four is looking very unlikely at this point. And from what feedback we received from Caltrans last Friday, it is looking less likely that we would be able to pivot to alternatives three and three A. But again, this, this is, nothing has been finalized yet. We're still working with Caltrans through this. But I just wanted to provide you that information right off. So now what is the next steps? Again, we are working with Caltrans for all this because they have to review and approve everything. But also these studies go to the state historic preservation officer for approval. So there is a long process prior to us even circulating our document. So our targeted schedule is late 2021. Again, we'd like to circulate this document, certify the document May of next year. We would then begin what is called final bridge design, so not the preliminary bridge design I was mentioning earlier. It would take about a year and a half, two years to complete design. We would then advertise and award the project in fiscal year 24 and 25. We begin construction in 2025, and we'd complete construction in 2027, prior to the Summer Olympics, which is driving our schedule. So with that said, that takes me to the end of the presentation. So I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any questions? Did Mariel raise, yeah, okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Creasel.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Poor, for making your presentation. I was invited to attend the board commission or corporation meeting on March 22nd. And so it's really interesting to hear these updates as far as Caltrans. One question I do have is, is Caltrans taking into consideration any kind of mobility issues, or is it really strictly limited to, their focus limited to climate and the functionality, how it's impacting the hippodrome?
So Caltrans looks at, at many different areas, environmental areas, so biological, traffic, hazardous waste. There are a lot of different areas that they do review. However, when it comes to the cultural studies, that was always going to be the most challenging element of the project. And that does by itself preclude us from moving forward with these alternatives, because there's no path forward. For example, if they do not agree, as they are the lead agency for NEPA. So whether they, they consider mobility elements, I don't think that's part of their, their purview when they review the cultural studies.
Somebody seems to have some, not be muted and have some background noise. If you could please mute if you are not speaking. I don't know who it is.
I have my hand up, but I can't.
Okay, Commissioner Cosmea Dodge. I'm sorry, did, did we finish with you, Commissioner Creasel?
No, absolutely. Thank you. I'm sorry for clarifying that. I'm wanting to propose that perhaps the commission could develop a letter. And, you know, with, with our perspective and our recommendations, would, would that be okay? Or is it too late at this point, Mr. Poor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure that was directed at me. So I, I think we would, we would definitely, you know, love to have your input on this matter. I want to also stress that what's really driving this project is the schedule, because we have this. It's not even just a regionally significant project. It is a nationally and globally significant project, as we have the Summer Olympics here in LA. So schedule is the most important thing. Any impacts to schedule are really going to be challenging. We also have funding issues when it comes to schedule. So like while, you know, we do, we would love to have any feedback we can. If Caltrans, for example, does not agree regarding the adverse effects, which they do not seem to at this point, again, things could change. Not sure how much difference it'll make, but I do welcome it.
Okay. If I have any further questions?
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the rest.
Well, I'm sorry. I got accidentally muted. Anyway, I was just saying thank you so much for your presentation. If I have any further comment, I will, you know, cue.
All right. Now, Commissioner Cosmea Dodge, did you have a question?
Yes, I had one question. I mean, I was looking at everything and I couldn't, there's so much, I couldn't really understand where it was all going. But the one thing I remember from the past discussions that I wanted to make sure of that there was a way for people in wheelchairs to get around without having to take the elevators. You know, that however, the whole thing is arranged, that there's a way, so it's not mandatory that wheelchair users take the elevator to get here, there, and everywhere there's a ramp, pathway, whatever. I didn't see, you know, I don't know. Is there a walkway? Will the walkway, will wheelchair users be able to use that? Or is everybody going to have to take the, the elevators to access? Because that's the one thing that we didn't want. When we talked about it before in the, in the disability commission meetings for, you know, with wheelchair users. That was my question.
Okay. So well, thank you for the question. So we, we have eight alternatives. And two of the alternatives, if folks were to take, it would be on wheelchairs taking the bridge, they would be required to take the elevators down, because there would be no at-grade sidewalk. Just for two alternatives, and those two alternatives were never our locally preferred ones. So those are alternatives five and six. Every other alternative, so one, two, three, four, and then seven and eight, all of them have a sidewalk that is at the current slope of approximately 10%. So if, for example, you know, no one wanted to take the elevators, the person could take the, the same slope that's out there currently at 10%. So, yeah, six of those alternatives have that, two which are not being pursued. They don't have that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Ringer, did you have a comment?
I just don't understand how accessibility, especially if it's a national issue and it's for a worldwide spotlight on Los Angeles, would not consider accessibility issues. It just, it's, it's, to me, it's the antithesis of not just what Santa Monica is about, but what supposedly America is about. And it just basically throws all the accessibility people who need it, sets them aside and said, you don't, just says completely, you don't matter. And it's just, I think it's shameful. And I don't, I don't, I'm shocked. I'm shocked. So I agree with Mariel. I think a letter is totally appropriate. That's all. I just can't believe it. I understand, you know, there's the time and all that, but really, we're talking about six years, really? So because there's a time, you know, so the people who need help won't get it. And to me, that again, I don't mean to be repetitive, but that's the antithesis of what I think it's about. And the Special Olympics, didn't they start here? I mean, didn't Maria Shriver start the Special Olympics? And I don't know. I'm all over the map, but those are my thoughts.
I see Nancy has her hand up as well.
Oh, Commissioner Link Ellis. I don't know why I'm not seeing that. Commissioner Link Ellis, did you have a comment?
No, I don't. I don't.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other commissioners have comments or questions? Okay. Did anyone from the public have a comment or question? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Poor. We really appreciate you coming and presenting with all this new information.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, we'll hope to see you again soon. All right. Okay. Now we are on to new business. So first of all, approval of the minutes of March 2nd, 2020, over a year ago. And boy, it's taken several months to get to this meeting, but hopefully you have all read the minutes that were provided in the packet. And does anybody have any changes to them, any corrections?
I have a question.
Okay.
Because it was a year ago.
Excuse me. Commissioner Cosmea Dodge, can you mute if you're doing something in the background, please?
Can I what?
Can you mute? There was background noise coming from you. You know how to mute? Little microphone in the top center? Because there was some crashing around.
No, it's muted.
Well, it's not because you're, we hear you. So, okay. All right. Sorry, Commissioner Link Ellis.
I'm just curious if the, the minutes were, were taken from not just the notes, but also from the transcript from last year. Because the transcript would be, the captioner would be the only complete notes.
They were, they were provided in the usual way that we were doing them since before the pandemic. And, okay, somebody is making a lot of noise in the background. I can't tell who it is. But it needs to be muted, please. Okay. And I should note that the minutes here are just going to be a recording. They will not be transcribed. And they will be available on the website. Okay. So do I have a, a motion to approve the minutes from March, March 2nd, 2020?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Just a yea or nay for the approval of the minutes?
Yes, this is Nancy Link Ellis.
This is Mariel, yes. Can you hear me now? I think it's stopped. Okay. So I was asking for a roll call, Commissioner, yea or nay on approving the minutes?
Yea.
Good dear. Vice Chair Ringer? Okay. Commissioner Link Ellis? Yes or no on approving the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Creasel?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Cosmea Dodge? Now you're muted, so you have to unmute to say yes or no.
Yes.
Okay. And did I miss anybody? That's, I think that's all. Okay. And I'm sure you all have noticed that we are down three members. Two resigned, one, her position timed out, she chose not to stay on. Okay. So then the minutes are approved. Now, we, okay, it's been I'm probably going on two years since we've had an election. And while it's been a lot of fun putting this together, it's time to elect new chair and vice chair. it's time to elect new chair and vice chair. It's, it's been a lot of work getting to this point. And so somebody with good technology would be good to have in this position. So I would like to start out by nominating Commissioner Elliott for chair. Does anybody else have any nominations? And if you don't want to serve, you may, you may choose. And I don't know how long it'll last, considering they're looking at revising the boards. So are you?
Are we just considering chairs right now?
Chair and vice chair.
Okay. I'd like to nominate.
Because we've been on, I think, since 19.
I'd like to nominate Chair Wetter for vice chair. Excuse me. Commissioner Wetter.
Okay. He's not on, so I don't know if he can. Well, I guess, we don't know if he would want to do it, do we? Though, but, okay, so we have for chair, Commissioner Elliott for vice chair, Commissioner Wetter. Any other nominations?
I would like to nominate TJ Hill for chair and Alex Elliott for vice chair.
Okay. All right, well, this is getting complicated. All right. Okay, chair. Okay. TJ, all right, and vice chair, we have Wetter. And Elliott, okay. All right, any, any other nominations? All right, we're going to do a roll call vote. All right, for chair, all those for Commissioner Elliott. Well, I'm gonna have, I guess I'll go through a roll call, and you can say if you choose Commissioner Elliott or Commissioner Hill. So Vice Chair Ringer, how do you vote? Vice Chair Ringer?
Jay Hill for chair and Elliott for vice chair.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Kresel?
I choose Jay Hill for chair and Alex Elliott for vice chair.
Okay. Commissioner Link Ellis?
Commissioner Elliott for chair and Commissioner Wetter for vice chair. We have the same situation here. We have two people here who we don't know if they want to do it or not.
I know. I don't know what the protocol is on that. I guess they can decline once they find out.
I'm fine if Alex wants to do anything. I think it's great. So I don't know. You know the protocol better than I, which is why I'm not a good chairperson. So.
Okay, Commissioner Cosmea Dodge?
Elliott for chair and Weber for vice chair.
Okay. Okay, who am I missing? Let's see, one, two. Oh, well, Commissioner Elliott, you get to, you get to vote, of course.
I'll vote for myself for chair and Wetter for vice chair.
Okay. Three, four, five. Who am I missing?
You're missing yourself, June.
Oh, that's it? Okay, okay. My vote is for Commissioner Chair for Elliott and Commissioner Wetter for vice chair. So that's four versus two. So I guess congratulations, new chair. Alex Elliott and in absent, in abstention, Commissioner Wetter for vice chair. All right. All right. So let's see. Item C is discussion of possible action regarding recommendations relating to council priorities for the year 21 to 23 biannual budget. I think we kind of went over that. It was provided. So I, one thing we need very likely is somebody, either an ad hoc committee or somebody to monitor the city council meetings for their, these different items so that they can be addressed in our, our meetings, because that's how it's structured now. So do we want to these votes or something? I guess we should have a, does anybody want to do, be on an ad hoc to monitor the city council? And I, I think it could be one, maybe two people at most. Anybody interested in that? Nobody. Okay.
I have a question. Monitor the city, I mean, the city hall or an ad hoc committee?
The agenda. The city council agenda. So that we can structure our meetings accordingly and bring up items. It would be working closely with the chair and I believe with Aleah, who has been a great help in all of this, done a lot of work.
I mean, I would be interested, but I'm so, you know, I don't have any tech skills.
That would be difficult, I think. Somebody really needs to be able to have, have the technical skills to to keep track of it.
No, well, forget me.
Okay.
I'll do it. This is Marielle. I will do it.
Okay. Does anybody else want to? Okay, so now we have to do a vote for?
I have a question.
Yes.
In monitoring the city council, since the city working group is over, are they just going to make their recommendation about board? I guess what I'm asking is, what at this point are we monitoring?
Well, we have to, we have to have ours, our agenda in line with the city council agenda. And so it's monitoring what's on their agenda, really, before their meeting, and working with the, I believe with the chair and with Aleah on the agenda for our meeting. That's the best I can explain it, I think.
Miss Fine, thank you.
Because she helped a lot with this. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote, all those for an ad hoc of Commissioner Marielle Kresel to monitor the city council agenda regarding recommendations for our agenda. Okay, current vice chair, Ringer? Yes or no? You here? Commissioner Ringer? Is she still on?
She's muted. You can put it in the chat also.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. What, I'm sorry. What was the vote? I apologize.
It's an ad hoc committee of one, Marielle Kresel, to monitor the city council agenda. Just say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kresel?
She put in yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. Oh, okay, I see. Thank you. And Commissioner Elliott has said yes. Commissioner Cosmea Dodge?
Yes.
And I say yes. Did I miss anyone? Okay. I think that's it. So that, that passes that Commissioner Kresel will be monitoring the city council agenda to, so that we can form with their agenda. All right. Um, let's see. Discussion possible action on status of ad hoc committees. May is Mental Health Month. Ordinance requiring businesses to turn on closed captioning. Researching use and policy of the city's beach wheelchairs. Well, now, I know we can start with the beach wheelchairs because Commissioner Cosmea Dodge has been working on this. And so I'd like to invite her to tell us what you have found.
Well, yes, thank you. The beach wheelchair that's up near Annenberg at that Perry's is doing fine. It works. The one that's down at Hollister is not working well. It's in bad shape. And I have to go back and check on it and see what they've done with it. They, the upper, up at the other one, they have garages and it's kept in a closed space. And the one at Hollister, it's left open. I think that's why it's so, it's all bleached, it's all ratty looking, it didn't work. So I don't know how, we'll have, somehow we'll have to work with who's gonna, you know, who's gonna supply the chairs, how they're gonna do. They're only allowing it from nine to five, from Monday to Friday, so you can't get the chair on the weekend. And then there's only two hours, you only can have it for two hours, and it's, you know, whoever comes first and all that. I don't know how to work all those out. I mean, it would all depend on who's dealing with Perry's and who's talking to Perry's and what they're willing to do for us, and whether the city would be able to help us or help with putting some finances behind, making it, making it more available and things like that. But as it stands right now, that's, you know, it's just the one up at, at the north, at the Perry's on the north end of the pier. And since they're only open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the only, the only day is Friday. So I would certainly like to be able to work on finding out and what's, what we can do and all that. I don't know how to proceed who's doing it. There was this woman, Susan, who was doing it and talking to Perry's. But I think that needs to be coordinated. Somebody, certainly coordinated with somebody from the disability commission. So that's all I have to say right now. I don't know how to proceed with that.
So you said the one that is north is fine because it's kept inside where?
They have it, it's a closed garage, like a container things, all closed up. And, and whereas down at the other one, everything is so that they don't have the outside facilities to keep them. And I think probably what happened is during the pandemic, it was, or at some point, it was left somewhere where it was left out, and it shouldn't have been left out. And, I mean, when I got there, the cover was so dirty and ratty, and it didn't have covered. And, I mean, you have to keep the toggle on, and that's the most important part of the darn wheelchair. If you don't keep that covered and protected, that's it. And it wasn't covered, that kind of thing. So they don't know, whoever, the guy who's up at the north Perry's, he knows, you know, he was good. But they don't know what, what they're doing at the other Perry's, and I don't know how to address it or, or who to see about it or what.
Now, isn't that part of Parks and Recreation? Are they the ones in charge of that? Anyone know?
It's, they were with Susan, something with the, the, Kara, something to do with the pier.
No, it had to do with Parks and Recs. And it's Janice, and I can't remember her last name. It's Parks and Recs project. It's their wheelchairs. It was their budget.
Okay.
And there's supposed to be more coming. My question to Catherine is, they have been using these during the pandemic? And if so, who's sanitizing them and how are they keeping them clean? And how are they doing COVID protocol with it?
Well, it doesn't sound like they were open during the pandemic so that they could be used. Is that correct?
They, they, it wasn't open. It was only like the last month or three weeks or something that they've even been available. We couldn't get them at all, no. Even, even when we were allowed to walk on the beach, we could, they, of course, there was no access because Perry's wasn't open. So I sure would like to see a different, you know, some kind of different system to make them more available, certainly now, especially. I mean, I was only on, I only took that wheelchair out that one day last week, last Friday. And, and I was almost to the water, and there was this woman in a wheelchair sitting at the end of the boardwalk. Right away, where'd you get that wheelchair? You know, people.
Right.
People want, definitely the need is there.
So as we come out of the pandemic a bit, it appears we need to coordinate with recreation, the Parks and Recreation or Parks Department. Catherine, since you've been working on this, do you want to to take charge of that?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
I'm in a wheelchair, so it's self-helpist, but.
And if you need assistance, I'm sure Aleah can provide contact or whatever you might need.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'll stop researching it and find out what we can do.
Okay, all right, very good. Yeah, because it sounds like it was left outside, and that's terrible for an electric wheelchair. Okay, on the other ones, do we want to continue with May's Mental Health Month and then the closed captioning?
Can I speak to the closed captioning?
Absolutely.
So I think where we left off with that was we were going to get support. It was something that Commissioner Hill and myself were working on. So when he gets back from his vacation, I can follow up with him. And kind of, we can kind of regroup and pursue city support for that. I'm not sure if it's completely the right time, because the city is recovering economically from the pandemic. But we'll see. I think this is important to, this is a time to seize the moment as well to, to make this kind of change happen. So, so let me have a conversation with Commissioner Hill, and then I will follow up the next meeting here.
Okay. And as far as May's Mental Health Month, well, obviously, it's been a year. We were starting to do something last year, but, you know, everything closed down, so there wasn't much we could do of anything. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I can speak to that because I work for the department. So a lot of our, we have this big event called We Rise, so it's wirise.la. It was a big in-person event, but obviously because of COVID, they moved a lot of the programming online. And I expect in the month of May, there'll be a lot of online programming. Like, I think the popular one is the Get Lit Poets, and one of them did the inauguration for the president, or, yeah, for Biden. So there's going to be a lot of online programming, and we'll see about anything in person that's kind of dependent on public health, things that are kind of out of our control. And also, there's been a lot of online resources that we've invested in. So if you go to dmh.lacounty.gov/resources, there's lots of stuff curated by topic. One of the most popular things is that they have a partnership with Headspace, which is a popular mindfulness app. So anyone in LA County gets that for free. They have a lot of stuff for LA County employees, like chatting with someone. There's an emotional support warm line you can call. So that's available to any residents. You can call our 800 number if you just want to talk to somebody for emotional support, someone who uses nonjudgmental active listening, just to talk to for 20 or 30 minutes. It's not like a clinical intervention. 20 or 30 minutes. It's not like a clinical intervention. And if you do, they can help kind of serve as a concierge to connect to services. So there's a lot of online virtual support for mental health. And our our programming will be online. And again, dmh/resources, dmh.lacounty.gov/resources, and then werise.la would probably be the best places to look.
So maybe what we can do is to uh, get something on our own website regarding these resources and a list of them for people to access since a lot has already been done by the county. Any thoughts on that from people?
Yeah, and another partnership that may be, oh, sorry, was someone else have their hand raised? I cut.
Well, you can go ahead and finish, and then we'll we'll go to them.
They're, they have these underserved cultural community groups that target specific underserved communities within LA County. And there's one called Access for All, focused on folks with disabilities. There may be an opportunity for a partnership there. And they they actually had a previous meeting curated resources for, around assistive technology for people with disabilities. So I I think that that might be, maybe we could get in one of their meetings or something like that. But there's definitely partnership opportunities there.
Okay. Commissioner Kreisel, did you have question or comment?
Okay, I just wanted to follow up, Bill, on what Alex was saying. I think we've participated in We Rise before as a commission, and so I think that's a really good idea. And if, you know, we want to participate in Access for All, maybe a panel of some kind, that would be a really good opportunity as well.
Okay, what what kind of panel are you talking about? Like, online, you mean?
Right, like perhaps a COVID-19, you know, mental health and for people with disabilities, that that might be a topic. I don't know, what do others think?
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said? I didn't. Commissioner Kreisel, what was the last part you said? I I think you're muted or something.
I'm so sorry. My computer keyboard is weird. I was just saying that perhaps a topic would be COVID-19, people with disabilities and mental health. That could be a topic, or maybe other things that people are, would want to consider.
Oh, okay.
Can you see my hand?
Cut, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Cosmea Dodge, the, when we say raise your hand, it's, there's a little app thing on here where you do a a raise hand and it goes into the chat part, but that's fine. We'll go ahead and say what you would like, Catherine.
Well, I really, of course, it's great to put that on, you know, get it on the website as soon as possible. But I was thinking maybe, especially when you talked about the ability for somebody to, one, Commissioner Elliott was talking about that somebody could call up and talk to somebody for mental health. And I was thinking that maybe instead of, if if there was a visual way or audio way to put on the disability website to get people to to see that, to, so that they understand right away that they can call up and get this virtual response to what issue that they're having. Instead of like a line, I don't know how it's done. I haven't seen the website. Perhaps it's, it's very clear and but some way, somehow to get it out to the people with that service is available. I don't know how to do that, but with, there's all these wonderful tech and art ways, I'm sure to, so the people will will be able to understand that and get it. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So we need people to work on this. So obviously, Commissioner Elliott has the links and the resources. So do you want to work on this? I know you worked before. I don't know, we have to form a new ad hoc because we had one before that we're just kind of continuing on. I think I was on that too, and I think Commissioner Wetter was on that as well. I think it was the three of us, of four. I'm very happy to assist with that still.
Yeah, I'm open to it as well.
Okay, now we can, we can just continue the same ad hoc unless somebody else is super interested in being on it, then happy to have someone else on it. Okay, we'll just continue that then, and we'll get together and talk about that. All right, let's see. Discussion and possible action for communication to city clerk's office regarding final, oh, this is a big one. Final recommendations from the boards and commissions, community working group. And you have the attachment in your packet regarding their recommendations. And
I'm sorry, do you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I I just wanted, before we moved on from the ad hocks, I just wanted to propose, I think when we were, when Mr. Por was in his presentation on the Pier Bridge Project, I was interested in writing a letter. I would like to propose that we do an ad hoc for that.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, who wants to work on the bridge? A letter to the bridge people. Okay, Commissioner Kreisel does.
And Lori.
Do you want to just do it by yourself?
No, Lori, Lori was interested as well.
Oh. Commissioner Ringer, did you want to work with Commissioner Kreisel on a letter to, for the bridge project?
Yes.
Okay. Then I guess we have to vote again for an ad hoc for a letter to the bridge project. So all those in favor of Commissioner Ringer and Commissioner Kreisel being on ad hoc to write a letter to regarding the pier project? Will say yes or no? Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Ringer? Yes or no? Oh, you do. Okay, I'm sorry. You did write it. Yes. Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Cosmea Dodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreisel?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that is passed.
Great.
All right. Right, okay, back to the recommendations from the community working group regarding the boards and commissions. And so I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it, so on goal one, there was a self-assessment survey of current board, commission, and task force members. I know I filled it out. I don't know if anybody else did. Goal three is the report, and I think this is what we need to write a letter to them about a couple items on here, determining differences between boards, commissions, and task forces to then appropriately categorize each current body. Reviewing existing boards, commissions, and task forces to see if there is an overlap among their responsibilities, and if so, considering consolidation that could benefit all represented constituents and better aligned with the city's framework priorities. You know, they are looking at combining, consolidating commissions relating to social services, and those would be the Commission on Senior Community, Commission on the Status of Women, and the Disabilities Commission, and the Social Services Commission. So four commissions into one. And of course, we don't want ours to be consolidated. And back over a year ago, I had, well, in in the last meeting, I believe, I presented, I provided what I had begun as far as a list of accomplishments. And I can provide that list again as a starting point for whoever wants to work on addressing a letter. First of all, I'm I'm assuming, okay, Marielle, what, Commissioner Kreisel, did you have a comment right now?
Yes, so PJ Hill and I went to the seniors' commission. I think it was December of 2019 when we did that and made a presentation. We had written a letter. I think we presented that to the commission at the time about this very issue. And I think that we can revisit that. I can find the letter and and we can revisit that and revise it now that there is a formal proposal due to consolidate. I would, I'd be willing to revise that letter.
Yes, and December of 19, I spoke before the city council regarding this issue.
Okay.
And here's the rub. I don't know when Commissioner Hill is returning. This has to be provided by April 15.
Okay.
So that's, that's the main thing. And I also had what I provided as far as my, what I wrote in my survey, though I'm happy to share that as well.
That'd be great.
If any of it can be used, but
Yeah.
So when is Commissioner Hill returning?
Returning April 12.
Ooh, that'd be cutting it a little too short.
Um. We've actually had tighter deadlines, so I think it'll be fine. Where do we need to to send the letter? Is it to council or is it to this commission's board?
Yeah, I I believe to city council, but we can double check with Aleah on that.
And like I said, I already have the letter. If you can send me what you have, then I can do the revision.
Absolutely. I can, I can just PDF all this and send it to your
Great.
I guess your SMGOV email. All right. Well, I guess we we have to vote on this as well.
Okay.
So we have a proposal to have an ad hoc committee to write a letter regarding the consolidation of the boards and commissions. And the proposal is that Commissioner Kreisel and Commissioner Hill, well, I guess you'll be writing most of it until he gets back, right? And then
It's already written, really. It's just to have to do the revisions.
Okay, and I think one of the important things to, I mean, the main thing we have to show them is where we do not overlap.
Right.
That's the big point. So anyway, all those who approve forming an ad hoc of Commissioners Kreisel and Hill to write a letter regarding the consolidation of the commissions, say yes, Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Ringer?
Yes.
Commissioner Link Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cosmea Dodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreisel?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that passes. And we look forward, yes.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
With, with this proposal, this letter that we're going to write and stuff, is it ever possible to think about having a smaller commission instead of like putting us in with like the seniors or the social services, whatever? Is it possible to make a new proposal where if they're trying to economize and and make everything, you know, come down and all that, that they devise a disability commission where there's not as many members? That's just, I was just thinking of some way to keep the disability commission.
You have to have six commissioners for a quorum, which is the main reason, my my term has timed out also. And but I have stayed on, which is, they're fine with that. So that we would have a quorum because I wasn't getting enough people for a meeting. So but they are they are looking at consolidating where there is overlap. So what we want to do is convince them that there is not overlap for what we do because, for example, we work with, we, you know, address issues of disabled children for one thing. So that's, I don't, we had talked back then about other commissions, you know, and it just wasn't anything that anybody wanted. We wanted our commission to stay as it is.
And I think one piece
I think that should be
I'm sorry, June, I was just saying, we enforce the APA. I mean, that's a real big part of that. There's no other commission that really has that piece. I mean, a lot of what we do is connected to the law in in that way. So I think that's really important, very distinct.
Yes, yes. And I'm 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 sure maybe some of these others do a little bit of certain, some of those accessibility things, but not to the extent that we do.
Right.
Okay, so you're going to do that, and it's going to be completed and in hopefully before the 14th because that is the deadline. And I will, I can check with Aleah to, and tell you exactly where it should go.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, June. And let's see. Do we have anything else? Um. No, we do, recommendations. Yeah, that's, that's what that is.
All right. So thank you all so very much, and it's been great seeing everybody again. And we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, have a good night.